Welcome, everybody. We're going to get ready to start this meeting. It is 6:10. I'd like to welcome everybody, particularly our students. We have a lot of wonderful young people here tonight. We're happy to see every single one of you, and we can't wait to celebrate you. If you'll all please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. As many of you know, we have the wonderful Amy Bowles, who is stepping in right now as our temporary assistant superintendent. She will be helping us with this meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Okay. So, we have an adjustment in the agenda tonight?
None.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the minutes from the following board meetings as presented. July 12, 2022, July 18, 2022, and July 27, 2022.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Excellent. Okay. Do we have any communication or correspondence?
I'll report out on resignations in my report, but I do have the letters for you to review if you want to.
Okay. Thank you so much. Administrative Board reports. Who would like to go first tonight?
Let's do Ellsworth High School.
Wonderful.
Hello, you have my report. Just a quick update, the band trip to Washington, DC. So, as you know, fundraising is going on throughout the summer and has been going on and will continue. And will continue throughout the fall, and I'll keep giving you updates on those. But letters have been given out to businesses, and I know Thursday night we're parking cars at the concert in Bangor. And so, the effort is definitely there, and hopefully we'll have enough funds. And so, tonight, anytime we have a state championship or a regional championship, we always bring them to a board meeting so they could be recognized. So, I brought the baseball team tonight, and they're 2022 state champions for baseball in Class B. And I think Mr. Frost tagged them as cardiac kids because they had a lot of come-from-behind victories, especially in the playoffs, in the semifinals, in the regional final, in the state championship. And so, I just wanted them to be recognized individually. If the coaches could come on up first. Coach Curtis, you want to say anything about this team?
Sure, I probably could sum this up.
I think, first off, the coach always gets, you know, the heat when things don't go well, gets the credit. The guys that are with me, Lisa and everything, this is a group effort. A lot of really good people put in a lot of time to make this successful. These boys kept it interesting, but what a wonderful group of kids. When you take a group of dynamic athletes and personalities and you get them to all push in the same direction, these are the results. And they should be very proud of themselves. I know I certainly am, so give them another hand.
So, guys, if you want to come up individually and just state your name and what position, and if you're a senior, what your plan is next year. If you're not a senior, just what year you are in school. Let's start, Hunter.
I'm Hunter Curtis. I guess I was center fielder. Next year, I'm going to Houston University. I'm studying physical therapy and playing baseball.
I'm Brett Bragdon. I caught last year, and I'm going to Houston to study physical therapy.
My name is Michael Palmer. I play third base, and I'm going to the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth to study business.
My name is David Ball, and I'm a pitcher, and I'm going to Thomas College for Business Administration and play baseball.
My name is Craig Grindel. I pitched, and I'm going to Central Maine to play baseball and study business management.
My name is Peter Kulinski. I was a shortstop, and I'm an incoming senior.
My name's Drew Cody. I was outfield, and I'm an incoming senior.
I'm Billy Garland. I was left field, and I'm a senior.
My name is Brady Kenny. I was DH, and I'm an upcoming senior.
My name is Miles Palmer. I'm an incoming junior, and I played right field.
I'm Wyatt Bragdon. I played second base, and I'm going to be a junior.
I'm Camden Barker. I'm a third baseman, and I'll be a junior.
I'm Luke Horn. I'm going to be a sophomore, and I played the outfield.
My name's Hunter Bowles. I'm going to be a sophomore, and I also played the outfield.
My name's Kyle Kenny, and I'm a sophomore, and I played the outfield.
My name's Hollis Grindel. I'm an incoming sophomore, and I caught.
Can we get one last picture? You guys?
Pretty good, love.
Look at them. Oh, my God, boys.
What an incredible accomplishment.
I don't want to be in the picture.
I know, right?
Can we hide it from the table while we get the picture? I feel like it's awkward.
They're going to block us out.
I know.
Even if we tried, couldn't photo bomb this.
I don't know.
No.
I was like, no. Hunter would love it if I was. All were great.
Amy, right up on the table.
Joel, make sure you get one.
If these aren't our favorite moments as board members, nothing is, right?
So, we'll let you guys leave unless you want to stay.
You're welcome to stay.
Miles, do you want to stay?
Your community is extremely proud of you.
Thank you, guys.
Well done, all of you.
Thank you, Coach.
Thank you, coaches.
Thank you.
No, thank you. I did think about, like, jumping into the picture to embarrass Hunter, but I'm afraid.
It would have been fantastic, Amy. I'm so excited that we still have so many kids on that team that will be with us next year. That's really, really exciting.
And important dates, and there will be a letter going out to parents of high school students, but it is coming up, believe it or not. So, the 22nd is a new staff orientation of August. Monday, August 29th, Professional Development Day for staff, the 30th also. And then, Wednesday, August 31st, is a freshman-only day. It's a K to nine day. And Thursday, September 1st, is the first day for everybody. So, gearing up, looking forward to it, looking forward to seeing the kids again, seeing staff. And yeah, it's that time of year.
Hey, Mr. Kulinski. Do you mind if I just add a little bit to the party report about the DC trip and the fundraiser? So, the Lincoln Memorial is going to be celebrating its 100th anniversary, and they're planning a big celebration this November in Washington, DC. And they've invited one high school band from each state to attend. And they, these were, they selected these bands based on...
It was a committee that selected them.
Yeah, the committee selected them. And so, for the state of Maine, it was Ellsworth High School band that was selected to go. The catch is, we've got to raise money for the trip, and the kids will be down there for several days. They'll be going to museums and doing some other cultural things and historical, you know, having some, an historical and cultural experience in DC, staying in a hotel. We need the transportation down there. So, it is going to be a price tag on this, estimated to be around $50,000 and maybe a little bit more. So, the kids and parents and teachers have been busy meeting and doing fundraising events. They did a bake sale in front of Rennie's a couple of weekends ago. They raised $2,000. So, if you think about a $50,000 goal, $2,000 is 4% of the way there. It's still a long way to go, but that's significant for one afternoon. And all the kids and their, you know, families baked goods and brought them there, and that was really amazing. The Ellsworth High School kids played with, and by the way, one reason I'm talking this up is, full disclosure, I have a son who plays in the band, but I've been a fan of this band for a long time. They did a, they joined the Ellsworth Concert Band at Harbor Park last Wednesday, and they had a table there with some buckets for donations. And Stu Markun was gracious enough, he announces the pieces for the Ellsworth Concert Band. If you've ever been to it, you know Stu. Everyone knows Stu Markun. They raised over $900 that night. We've got a, I think the Maine Community Foundation has promised $5,000, but it's a matching grant, so.
Yep.
And so, anyway, look for fundraising events that are going to be happening, and see, you know, there's going to be a lot of ways to support this. This Thursday in Bangor, Shaw's, they block off part of their parking lot to provide parking for the waterfront concert. And so, we need some parents and students there, some adults and students to help with this. I think they're still looking for some adults. So, if anyone listening to this tonight or present here in the room tonight wants to help out with that, it's just a matter of directing people driving in there to the correct parking lot and collecting the fee for that. And Shaw's is willing to let us have all the proceeds from that, which is very generous. And it's expected that we'll raise between $2,000 and $4,000 that night. So, I just wanted to thank you for mentioning the DC trip and fundraising efforts, and I just, I hope you don't mind that I...
Of course. No, and I'll give you another update in September.
I'm sure we'll have updates at every meeting, at the next couple of meetings, anyway. So, thanks for...
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
It's a very stout number to reach, and...
Yeah.
Short amount of time.
Yeah, and we've got to do it with help.
And with that price tag, it's right around 40 students.
It's over 40 students.
It's over 40 students.
Plus the band director and other staff and chaperones.
So, when you think about it, it's a hefty price tag, but not...
It's about $1,000.
Not bad per person for what they're going to be doing.
And obviously, a lot of the kids, their families will be contributing to it. So, you know, we're, we can do this.
Yeah, and the package that we have, Thursday, Friday, they visit Smithsonian's. Saturday is a centennial they'd be a part of. Sunday, visit Smithsonian's, and then come back on Monday.
Quite a trip.
It'd be a great trip.
So, if any adults are interested in helping out Thursday at Shaw's, you can email me, and I can connect you with the organizer of that.
Awesome.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Mr. Frost. You're not going to... He's like, absolutely not.
Bye, Mr. Frost.
I think we're working backwards tonight.
I'm Travis, principal at Ellsworth. Yeah, we're still there. 5'8". You have my report. I wanted just to really extend the biggest amount of gratitude that I can for Lisa Backman and extended school year that she produced. I know that Carol Ann helped, but she also told me, Carol Ann told me that Lisa was the driving force behind it. So, thank you for making sure that was successful. I really appreciate that. We also have some staff in our building that are just going way beyond. Bev and Sherry, obviously, are doing layman's work to make sure that we can hit the ground running. Frank's team is doing a great job. I don't know if anybody's been in front of the school, but they've actually trimmed the shrubs. They put some stuff down, so the exterior of the school is looking pretty good. We have started some summer work, and I think the most important part of what I'd like to say tonight is we're still looking for a couple of positions at the elementary, middle school. We have a sixth-grade teacher position that we're still looking for and a couple of sped teachers. So, I know that we've moved it back to the top, and I actually was reached out to tonight by somebody who's interested in one of those positions, so I'm excited about that. So, do you have any questions for me?
Do you, this is totally a mom question, but I'm wondering if you know when we might expect to see teacher assignments for middle school as well as any school supply list?
Yes, yep, I do know that.
Are you going to share it with me?
Oh, you want to?
Glad you know.
Sorry, I'm already starting to play. Yeah, so the teachers came in yesterday and today to get their letters and envelopes. Today was the day that I said I wanted them to wait to make sure that we had all the parent requests where the kid, we wanted to make sure all of that, and with their staffing, we wanted to make sure that we place kids where they needed to be placed. Having said that, that was done Friday, so the teachers had their list Friday with the expectation that sometime today, they would come in and get the envelope stuff. That includes the supply list. And I'd like to just say that we also have packed the bus just happened. We talked to Donnie just a little bit this morning, and he was asking us what, when to bring the stuff. And we're actually, because of the way things work with wax and all that, they're going to be cleaning our suite this week. So, we're like, can you wait till like Monday? But then we'll let people know. So, the list is a suggestion, and if anybody needs help, they just need to reach out to either April or my... So the list is a suggestion and if anybody needs help, they just need to reach out to either April or myself or Scott and we'll let them know what we have for them to help. Okay?
I'm a chronic procrastinator, so if I don't, I know that sounds strange, but if I don't buy school supplies like right now, my kids will start school because I'll be like the night of, I'll be like, oh, I never did do that, did I?
Right.
And then it's hard to find them sometimes.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's right, exactly. If the shelves are full again, so, yeah, so they should be coming out. You should have them by the end of the week.
Awesome. Thank you, Travis. Thank you.
Ms. April Clifford, so good to see you. So I have shared my report with you. Teacher letters should be received by parents already. If you haven't got your teacher letter, please make sure you reach out to the office tomorrow. We'll make sure that you get one. I shared with you in my board report, my focus for the school, upcoming school year, and I'm just going to talk about that I want to improve the school-to-home connection and also improve student academic achievement and behavioral growth and achievement. So those are the two main points. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I do have some thank yous, like Travis. There's a lot of people who worked all summer to ensure our kids had successful experiences and one is Frank and Josh and the entire custodial crew. They are working hard to make sure our buildings were accessible for summer school as well as getting them ready for the opening of the year. Also to Lisa and Carol Ann and the entire extended summer school staff. They created a fun, authentic learning experience for students. I would say we haven't had a summer program since I've been principal there and it was an amazing opportunity for kids. I want to thank Lisa Russell and her kitchen staff for supporting that summer school program. I also want to send a shout out to Deanna Leathers for continuing to support EMS in our transition of hiring a new bookkeeper. She went well above and beyond the notice that she gave and I definitely wanted to publicly thank her for that. Always, of course, the two ladies that run the office, Bev and Sherry, they covered the office all summer as well. And Martha Baldwin, I'm not sure if you saw a lot of unfamiliar faces in our garden, our, our school garden this summer, but she created a mailing with a list and we had parents who volunteered to water the garden for a week. And so she recruited a lot and she's really getting that outdoor classroom and that community garden back to pre-COVID times and I wanted, seriously? My goodness, I'm so sorry.
That is unbelievable.
All right. And I wanted to thank Donnie and the transportation crew for supporting summer school too as well. It's a commitment for our staff to do that in time during the summer. Kindergarten open house has been scheduled. That has gone out to all of our kindergarten parents and that is August 29th from 4:30 to 5:30. This is kindergarten only. They get to walk through, they get to get familiar with the building and meet their teachers. We do kindergarten by themselves because we want to make sure that they have a positive first experience and not be overwhelmed with the 715 kids in our building. We are still looking for ed techs and so if you know anybody who's interested or possibly has questions about what an ed tech does or what that looks like, please reach out. This, I think, is the best job in the building. You get to spend your day helping kids learn. I mean, and it's, we have great people who do that. Most of our ed techs come and they stay. We have ed techs there of 15-plus years, 20-plus years, 30-plus years. It's a great environment. We have a family-like atmosphere and I just would love to be able to provide the support that all kids need in our building. So if you're interested, please reach out. If you're unsure what the position is or what it looks like, I can answer all those questions for you. But that's my report. Do you have any questions?
Could you just say once again when the open house is?
The kindergarten-only open house, we just set dates for the other stuff today, which I wasn't going to announce, but kindergarten only is August 29th and it runs from 4:30 to 5:30.
Thank you.
Yep. These are not readers, by the way. Yeah, oh, they are?
Yes.
Can't see anything while talking. Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for me on my report?
Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you, April.
Yes, that makes sense. Yep, let's do that. Hello, Annie. Carrie, good to see you.
Nice to see you. You have my report and I just handed out the copies because we have a new logo and so I thought you might want to see it. So we have had a really, really busy summer and our catalog, which is 32 pages, I think, 130 courses, is coming out sometime soon, we're hoping. We don't know the exact time when it will be delivered, but we're excited that that's on its way. We've been really busy with the Early Childhood Education Micro-C credential, which is detailed in my report. We've been meeting with a team of folks developing that and we will start the first phase of that pilot this fall. So if anybody is interested in making a difference in children's lives, working with young children, this is a really great pilot program to get you ready to start a job in that field with confidence, a lot of knowledge and skills and internship experience behind you. All at, we're almost positive at no cost. We're still developing the program. And it also will likely result in college credits as well. So if, it will get you on the path to a position and it will also get you on the road to college if you're interested. So we're excited. We're also rejuvenating, or not rejuvenating, but bolstering our volunteer program. We have a very small and mighty staff, but we have a lot of students that need extra support. So we've developed, I spent the summer developing volunteer training programs for volun, and orientation and then we have different roles people can play, not just tutoring for reading, but English as a second language, digital literacy, helping us substitute in the, as a, for, as a receptionist, helping with library and materials. And so check out our website. Everything is, most of our classes, hopefully by the end of tonight, will be on our website. And what else is on here? We're having an open house and it is no longer scheduled on September 8th, International Literacy Day. I found out today that we're going to have an opportunity, the administrative team for a training on September 8th. So our open house is going to be on the 15th and it's from 2:00 to 6:00. It's long because it's truly an open house. We're hoping that some of our instructors will be there who teach our enrichment classes and you'll be able to find out about our programs. And it's really kind of our grand opening, which we couldn't have because we moved into our new space during COVID. So we hope you'll stop by and you'll see more about that. Just an FYI, HISA has been run by ETS, the Educational Testing Service, and that's changed, changing hands on September 24th. And it's going to go to PSI, which I had known nothing about, but hopefully it'll be great. You'll see on, on here, our new logo, which I just got in my hands today. And it's, it's, we're a part of a hub. The Adult Ed Programs in Hancock and Washington County work very closely together. We do a lot of projects together. Our funds come through the hub and so we've, have a family of logos that have just been, are just being, on... I, I said, can I have it? Because our catalog's going out, so I'm not even sure all the programs have it. So next month, I'll bring you all of them so you can see how we're related. And we've decided to put "community" into our name because we're very community-oriented. We work with partners and so we're now going to be called Ellsworth Adult and Community Education to, to acknowledge our community involvement. Any questions?
Annie, it's not a question, but I'm excited that you're having an open house after all this time and I hope that members of the public will take note of this and try to find out, you know, time in their day on the 15th.
Yeah, we tried, that's why it's long, because I wanted parents who have kids in school, who might want to come back and finish their education to be able to do it.
Right.
But also people who are, who are working and can come after, so.
And anyone with kids in school knows where all of our three main school buildings are, but some, some, a lot of people don't necessarily know where Ellsworth Adult Community Education is. I love the new name and that it's, you know, it's in the Mill Mall. It's really accessible. It's very, you know, obviously right between the high school and the Ellsworth Elementary Middle School.
Yeah.
So I hope people will...
Stop in.
Stop in.
Need us.
I certainly plan on doing so.
Be awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Just to kind of comment here, so Adult Ed covers so many wonderful things and a lot of, a lot of people don't understand, like, yes, it is for education post-high school, but also people wanting to finishing up, to finish up their, their education, but also just for a lot of specialty courses. People who might need something a little more specific for what they're doing in life. Maybe it's accounting, maybe it's beekeeping, whatever it is, there are so many incredible courses. It's the most underutilized resource in this town. People say, oh, we need to teach basics. Well, we teach all the basics in, in our schools. However, sometimes people need something that really goes along with maybe what they're doing in the food service industry, maybe what they're doing in the marine industry, maybe something that they're doing, you know, something that they didn't plan for earlier in life. This offers it. We have it all here and it is probably, for a town of only about 12,000 people, this is one of the most comprehensive lists and most thorough catalogs, so.
Well, I do, as you know, I couldn't love my job any more than I do.
You put your heart into it.
I do, I do. I will admit that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Annie.
So I'll do my HCTC report.
Great.
For Hancock County Technical Center. Like the other principals, I want to acknowledge Frank and his staff for the work he does and they do at HCTC with our older building. Our work sometimes is a little bit complex and complicated and they've worked really hard to get our building up and running for this year. I also want to acknowledge the IT staff. We had a lot of technical, technological issues this past year and IT's worked really hard this summer with our influx of students in the fall to get our building up and ready for the fall, so I really want to thank IT for that. Our construction project of our classrooms for our new cybersecurity and hospitality programs are just about complete, so we're hoping that within the next couple of weeks, those teachers can start moving into those classrooms and they're beyond excited about that. Bridge Academy, as you know, typically does a summer academy over the summer, three-day for incoming juniors and a two-day. And this year, they weren't able to do that. So we're going to host a one-day Bridge Academy orientation for our incoming juniors at Ellsworth High School on Thursday, August 18th. And we're going to have an opportunity to have the Bridge executives come, UMaine, EMCC, get kids registered for their college classes. They'll take some of the career inventory assessments to help get them ready for their work, both at the college level and at HCTC, so we're really excited about that. Some really good news, we, I'm not sure if you remember, but back in May, the state put out an RFP for CTE Personnel Infrastructure and Equipment and all the CTEs, which is Career Technical Education Schools in the state of Maine, could apply for this funding. And we were actually awarded close to $300,000 through our grant application. We had to specifically target programs that have been identified by Governor Mills Economic Recovery Plan. So for us, that was our Health Occupations Program, Biomedical Sciences and our Hospitality Travel and Tourism Program. So we are going to get about $300,000 worth of personnel, infrastructure and equipment to upgrade those programs, which we're super excited about. There are three of our higher enrolled programs, Michelle Cody's Health Occupations Program. We have a long waitlist. This influx of money will help us be able to add a few students to the CNA program, which, as we all know, is desperately needed. I'll be talking about this in the other report when I talk about staffing needs. We are in desperate need of an automotive instructor. Our automotive instructor, as you'll see from his resignation letter, he is now the automotive instructor at Eastern Maine Community College. So we have a really great group of incoming kids for automotive one and a really great, solid group of automotive two students. If anybody in the community knows of anyone that may be interested in teaching automotive, we really need to find someone. If you talk to any of our businesses in Hancock County, we are in desperate need of automotive service technicians, so we really need someone to step up hopefully and take that position. And again, to be a CTE teacher, you don't have to have gone to school to be a teacher. You have to have the experience in the industry and then we train you on the job, the teaching skills. So we really need someone from the automotive industry. Maybe if anybody knows of anybody, help me out. That would be fantastic because I really want the students to start the year feeling good about the program and stay invested in the program. Finally, as other staff talked about, and I'll actually talk about it in my other report, happy to host an open house and I'll talk about that in the Assistant Superintendent's Report. Questions about HCTC?
When did you post the automotive instructor position?
It's been probably almost a month.
Okay.
And we've had no applicants.
All right.
Yeah. So I've got Plan B in my mind. I always have Plan Bs, but I'd rather...
Yeah.
Rather Plan A.
Yes, I'd rather have Plan A where we have a teacher.
Right. Congratulations on getting $300,000 for our district.
Yes, that was super exciting.
That's $300,000 our taxpayers in Ellsworth do not have to come up with. And puts us ahead instead of behind.
Yes, I'm super excited about it.
That is incredible. Very, very well done.
Our curriculum coordinator is not able to be here tonight, but she did submit her report and say that if you have any questions, feel free to email her as always. And now Assistant Superintendent's Report. So the first couple of weeks on the job, I thought it was important that, you know, I spent time meeting with each department head and school leader. Having relationships with everyone already, of course, made that a little bit easier. But to just find out the pulse of what's going on throughout the district and understand where every department and school was at. We've had two full days of leadership team meetings, one a couple of weeks ago, had one today, have another one tomorrow and one again next week. I'm really trying to be thoughtful and planful about what the start of school will look like and how we're going to organize and structure things. We've redesigned our new teacher day. We're really excited about the plans we have for that. So a letter will be going out to all new staff. We'll invite all new staff to that day, not just teachers. So we'll be sending correspondence out, inviting them and giving them the agenda for that day. And just a reminder, you know, we have our two professional development days, August 29th and August 30th, which are coming right up, so I'm really appreciative to the leadership team. They've been very gracious with me during this transition and come together and answered all my questions and have been fantastic. So thanks, guys, for your support in doing this. Want to also extend thanks to facilities and maintenance. All of our, what people really don't know is that our custodians and maintenance not only do our schools, but they also do central office downtown, they do our bus garage. We have all of our schools' adult ed offices. I mean, we have a lot of ground that we cover and so I'm really appreciative that even though they've been short-staffed, they've worked really hard to get that turnover completed so that we can start school. I want to thank Natalie Knox and Star97.7, who once again did the backpack, the backpack promotion. Ellsworth Hannaford graciously hosted them again and Donnie Saunders brought the school bus so that people could donate items for our students in need. So we're very much appreciative and I want to thank Donnie, Paul Marcosian, Rebecca Wright and Megan Stubbs, who gave up time on their Saturday to swing in and do an interview. It was great because we had the transportation director, a board member, an administrator and then Megan Stubbs is a teacher at HCTC, so it was great. They did interviews and it kind of got us out there, which is one of our themes this year in leadership, is working on building cultures of community and increasing community partnerships. community partnerships. So this was a really great way to start that out. I've listed.
Mrs. Balls, and also want to thank First National Bank for.
Sponsoring.
Sponsoring that also.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
I wanted to announce new and transferring staff. One of the things that we work really hard in at the summer, of course, is building our network of employees. I've continued to say that our greatest resource is our people. New and transferring staff I want to announce tonight. Laura Johns will be transferring from our technology director to the Hancock County Technical Center Cybersecurity Instructor. Diane Bastido is a new ed tech at EEMS. John Dyer is a new ed tech at Ellsworth High School. Bonnie Markun has been hired in transportation and Claire Cullinane in transportation also. Teacher nominations and administrator nominations confirmed by the personnel committee on behalf of the board. I'll announce these quickly and we can talk about them more at personnel. But Amanda McLaughlin, EMS K4 Behavior. Greg Berry, Food Service Director. Betsy Higgins, EMS Clinical Social Worker. Kevin Russell, Custodial Supervisor. And Erin Pinkney, Ellsworth Middle School Eighth Grade Teacher. I passed around letters of resignation. Angela Gray, Ellsworth Elementary Middle School Ed Tech. Edith Hardison, Ellsworth Elementary Middle School Ed Tech and Summer School. Matthew Walton, Long Term Sub Ed Tech and Cross Country Track Coach. Callahan Carter, Ellsworth Middle School Show Choir Director. Kalan Hanley, EMS Ed Tech. And Hunter Havel, Automotive Instructor at HCTC. Vacancies still to fill. As I mentioned, Automotive Instructor at HCTC. We still have a sixth grade teaching position at Ellsworth Middle School, along with Middle School Special Education Teachers, Director of Technology. And then we have hourly employees in all areas, Ed Tech's, Food Service, Transportation, and Custodial Staff. Another thing that I did first couple of weeks is Michelle Osborne and Joe Merrill, our school nurses, came in and spent some time with me to talk about opening of school and also the new immunization law. The immunization law is in effect and nurses are working to notify families that are out of compliance. They received notification last spring. School nurses are currently working on a follow-up letter so that everyone understands where we're at. And as leadership talked about, we have set our open house schedule for the fall. One of the things that we'll talk about in the agenda is the opening of schools. And we are open again and we are welcoming families back into our buildings. We did last spring, but we are super excited to start the year off this way. So I wanted to announce that on Monday, August 29th, like Mrs. Clifford said, we have our kindergarten open house from 4:30 to 5:30. On Wednesday, August 31st, Hancock County Technical Center will have its open house from 6:00 to 7:30. Monday, September 12th, from 5:00 to 7:00, grades one through eight, will have their open house at EMS. And as an overlap, Ellsworth High School will have their open house from 6:00 to 8:00. So that way, families are only out one night if they have kids in multiple locations. And there won't be scheduled speakers and events. It will be very much come in, go talk to your child's teacher, grab the handouts the teacher may want to have, and move about so that people that are working or busy can drop in when they can. And we're hoping that this will make it accessible for families to have it on one night for the two, three schools. And then last but not least, as Annie mentioned, Thursday, September 15th, from 2:00 to 6:00, to accommodate people of all hours and students at all different levels, the Ellsworth Adult Ed Open House will take place. First day of school for K9, Wednesday, August 31st, and grades 10 through 12 will join them on Thursday, September 1st, as will HCTC. So we've been very busy.
Yeah.
Trying to get us up and running for the start of school. Any questions?
All right. Thank you for your hard work.
You're very.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Yes, you're very welcome.
Okay. Committee reports.
So Facilities and Transportation have a couple of items on the agenda as well as policy. We did want to make mention, we met in the way back, probably, I think it was in December or January, with Facilities and Transportation and spoke with some of our staff that work in the bus garages about a plan to make sure that students who have special medical needs, that the drivers are aware of those needs on the buses so that they can be prepared to, to assist those students if needed. We are still working out the logistics of that, but for those parents who are concerned about their kids and that medical information being shared with their bus drivers, it is in the works. We are hoping to have something to start the school year, but we just didn't have the specifics to bring forward tonight. So just, just so that, that they know and everyone else knows that we're working on something for them.
Do you want to talk about the possible grant that we're calling?
Oh, yeah. For the bus?
Mm-hmm.
So right now, the federal government has put out electric school bus grants. And there is an opportunity for schools, they have developed a priority list in the state of Maine, for schools that meet a certain threshold and are designated as rural. They can apply for an electric school bus for full expense and the infrastructure cost to set the school bus up. We are not on that priority list, but we can apply for an electric school bus up to $275,000 of the cost with infrastructure included in the grant. We are pursuing that. Mr. Saunders and I are working on that. And as you know, within 15 years, we have to transition to that. So this would get us on our way. So we are looking into that and learning more about it as we go to explore that option.
Right. Which, it's not just school buses. We have to transition, we have to transition everything. Our school vans, our, any vehicle that a municipality or a school uses. It's, this is not a choice. This is a requirement by the state of Maine. So if we can get grant money for that, every dollar of grant money we get, we save the Ellsworth taxpayers. So we're going to pursue that. We are also looking into how much solar power this school is designated in the solar power co-op that the city has with the solar power co-op here in Ellsworth to see if there's any, if we're going to be bringing on vehicles because of this new law that require charging, if we are going to exceed that, then it makes sense to look into, okay, how much are we allotted? How much overage should we start looking into solar panels? Because if you don't have solar, the electricity, I mean, to, just to be clear, our electrical cost to the district is one of the highest increases in our entire district of our, all of our bills. What this last rake has, rate has done to our, our town is, it's a lot. So anytime we can find a way to save our Ellsworth taxpayers money, we need to, we need to be looking into that and we need to be weighing that out. So we, it's, it's not just a bus. There's a lot of components here, all having to do with transportation facilities that we are looking at, but it is in the beginning stages. It's going to take a lot, it, it takes a lot of sorting out and yet, it's a, it's a lot of waiting for people to come out to give you estimates, to get you kind of crossing that finish line. But we have at least begun the process in hopes to save taxpayers money as much as we can, as soon as we can. We also had something else for transportation facilities. We.
I think it's on the agenda.
Oh, yeah. We're going to vote on that. Okay.
Yeah, we'll vote on it.
What about our others?
So I serve on finance committee and I have nothing to report at this meeting. Personnel, there's no, there's nothing to report on collective bargaining yet. And then we met on, to do some teacher and other staff recommendations and will be, those will be coming up later on in the agenda.
Thank you. Can't wait.
Yeah. Same here.
Any other committee reports?
Okay.
Any old business?
I have none.
No? Okay. So we're going to go to public participation. Before we start public participation, I'm going to go over the rules and remind people that absolutely no targeting of individual staff members of our school district is allowed by law, or students for that matter. We are going to limit public participation to 60 seconds per person tonight. We are going to also enact one of our options, which is if you are an Ellsworth citizen, or if you have a child in the Ellsworth schools, you may come up and speak. Or if you are a child in the Ellsworth boroughs, you are absolutely welcome to come up and speak.
Point of order, Madam President.
If we cannot, if we cannot abide by these, we will stop the meeting.
Uh, point of order.
Okay.
Please stop the meeting. Thank you very much.
Yep. Point of order, your public participation. Yep, uh, point of order, your public participation...
You have 60 seconds. I'm sure you guys conduct yourselves very orderly. We are going to, once again, remind you, absolutely, under no circumstance are you to target any staff member or child in our district. If you do, if we have one more disruption, the meeting will end and we will be done for the evening. So, ready?
I am.
Okay. We're ready for you.
I wanted to get up quick because I'm limping.
Don't worry.
I didn't want to waste my 60 seconds.
You're not going to wait.
No.
These glasses do work.
I hear ya.
Plus April broke them off me, that's all.
I know.
I'm John Linehan, founder of Constitution Hall, and I just want to make a presentation, I guess, for Constitution Hall. I founded it for a couple of reasons. I am a Christian and I believe in our Constitution 100%. I believe our nation was founded on biblical, spiritual, constitutional issues. And in the Liberty Bell, it's inscribed, the verse in the Bible, Leviticus 25:10, says, proclaim liberty throughout all the land to all its inhabitants. And in the top of the Washington Monument, now I haven't climbed up there, but I see it myself, but I read this, it says, laus dios, or praise God. So, all through our history, we are a Christian nation, we're founded on biblical principles with a constitution. My mission at Constitution Hall is very simple, really. I'll just skim a couple of highlights just because of time on it. But our venue is to provide a place for like-minded, Maine-first, American-first patriots to gather freely, hold rallies, host conventions, livestream, conduct educational and entertaining events for both adults and young patriots, and host any other pro-constitutional event you could possibly dream up. My mission statement is as simple as this, to provide a patriotic venue to unify all individuals, groups, and organizations within the entire state of Maine that share loyalty and love for our constitution, for our God-given freedoms of faith, family, and friends, and who share one common goal of taking action to restore our original intent, constitutional freedoms. I just really want to invite people to come and check out the hall. Every week in the Ellsworth American, I have a quarter-page ad, and I list the upcoming events that are in there. I've really, most of the stuff has been focused on the constitution. We've had several different people present constitutional training classes. And I'd like to offer to the public school system, anytime, we'd be glad to show those during the day, or whatever time is convenient for any class, if they want to come up, they're very well videoed and choreographed, everything, on a stat from day one, on how the constitution was founded, where it came from, and why it's there. So, that's what we do. And I really, I know, I was against these...
Okay, we're gonna, um, we're gonna have to stop.
It's just...
But thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Paul's timer, Paul's timer kept restarting.
When it goes red, that means it's past it.
Excellent. Okay.
Next time we have coffee, we're going to have to talk about that timer, Paul.
It's a deal.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Who else would like to come up and speak tonight? Is that everybody? Okay. Would you like to? Let's give him a minute. If he would like to, we can kinda... We always love hearing from you if you want to say something, sweetie.
He wants to talk, but I don't know what he wants to talk about.
That's okay. You know what? You have 60 seconds. Say what you want. You can come up here and say anything. One day, you might be sitting here. This is like really good practice.
Cap at it, buddy. If you can say what you want, go for it.
It's okay.
We're all here to listen.
Welcome.
Good job.
Hi.
Hi. What's your name, sweetie?
My name is Justin, and I'm going into fifth grade.
Wow. Thank you. Thank you for being here, Justin.
Yeah. Um, yeah. I don't know if I'm going to... I might go to Trenton. I don't know who, but Cameron needs to go. He punched me in the face.
Oh.
Why?
You can't say his name.
Why?
It's our rules.
Oh. I'm so sorry.
All right. Good night, y'all.
Thank you for being brave enough to come up there. Well done. Is there anybody else? No? Okay. Thank you so much. All right, we are going to move on to the next thing. We have a few things to vote on here. We're going to go to new business, item J, number one, acknowledgement of Personnel Committee action on behalf of the board. Anybody want to talk about this?
So, the Personnel Committee, which is Kelly McKenney and myself, met with the superintendent last Friday morning via Zoom at 7:00 a.m., and we received... Good night. We received Mrs. Bowles' recommendations that came from the respective screening committees for these positions. And I will list what the positions are and then ask Mrs. Bowles to add any additional information that she'd like to do. But we have Amanda McLaughlin as a special education K-4 behavior teacher at EEMS with a first-year probationary contract. That will be the motion. Erin Pinkney is an eighth-grade teacher at EEMS with a first-year probationary contract. These are all for the upcoming school year. Those two are. And then we've got Greg Berry as our new food service director. As we all know, Ray Daly retired at the end of the school year. Betsy Higgins as EEMS licensed clinical social worker, and Kevin Russell as custodial supervisor.
Wonderful.
So, very excited about these hires. These are some really crucial positions. I do want to introduce Greg, who is here tonight.
Hello.
We are... I won't make you speak at Chrome, but then that way everyone can see you.
I'd love to hear him speak.
You are slightly taller than that microphone.
Yes.
So, Greg comes to us from MDI Hospital as their food service director. The committee was thrilled with his ideas that are very much in line with where we want to see our food service program go in the future, very much about building relationships with his staff and starting partnerships with community and involving students in the food service program. So, we're beyond thrilled to have you.
Yes, I'm very thankful for this opportunity, and I'm very excited to get started.
I bet MDI is very sad to lose you.
Yes, yes. It was a tough decision.
You were there for how long?
16 years.
16 years, wow.
So, yes.
Wow. We are very excited to have you.
Well, thank you very much.
We hope we have you for at least 16 years.
A long time, yes. I don't think I'm going anywhere. Thank you again.
Nice to meet you.
Very nice to meet you.
Thanks for coming. Excited about all of the nominees. Amanda is graduating in December with her master's in behavior, so she's going to be a great addition. Erin Pinkney, many know from the basketball courts and from the drop-off circle at the Loop at the elementary middle school. We're super excited for him to join our eighth-grade team. Betsy Higgins, very experienced licensed clinical social worker, so that's going to be a wonderful addition to our staff to support students at EEMS. And then Kevin Russell, our custodial supervisor, comes with varied experiences to help support Frank and Josh in that position. So, very excited about all of these hires.
So, I would like to make a motion to acknowledge the Personnel Committee's action on behalf of the board in confirming the superintendent's nominations as follows. Amanda McLaughlin as special education K-4 behavior teacher at EEMS with a first-year probationary contract for the '22-'23 school year. Erin Pinkney as eighth-grade teacher at EEMS with a first-year probationary contract for '20-'22-'23 school year. Greg Berry, food service director. Betsy Higgins, EEMS licensed clinical social worker. And Kevin Russell, custodial supervisor. I second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor? Wonderful.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard, everyone. We're so excited to have all of you.
Welcome aboard, Greg.
Just before we get going to the next thing, do you know approximately how many more special ed tech positions we need to fill, in case anybody is interested?
Give or take what happens in kindergarten, you're looking at about...
20-ish? So, if anybody out there has the heart and desire to want to come work for us?
I'll bet.
I will bet. Is that at all levels?
We only need one left at high school that is in the life skills program. We have, I believe I just saw, four at middle school. I'm sorry, I looked at it today with so many other numbers.
Right.
And all of the rest are in the elementary setting, K-4. That's where we really have the most need.
But you need...
So, K-4 heavy?
You need ed tech ones through threes, or are you looking for most...
We're happy to give professional development to young people, and obviously, if people are afraid, that maybe they don't have the experience.
Do you want to come up here and say...
I was going to say, can we come up and say...
I would really like people at home to hear you.
The public, that way the public hears.
So, I think some people, and these are some of the inquiries that I've actually gotten, is what does it take to be an ed tech? And I know April mentioned earlier that she's happy to answer those questions, as am I, as is Lisa, back when she's the assistant director of special education. Any of the principals can too. But I think some people think that you have to have all this education to start with, and you really don't. We can help you grow. If you come to us and you have a high school education, and maybe it's 10 years out, and you say, "I'm going to make a change in my life," it's a really great opportunity to not only be on the same schedule as your children, but also as a community member to get in there and see all the really great things that we're doing. I mean, I think this is going to be a fantastic year. We have a lot of great ideas, and we sincerely are happy to train. And I think that we have the staff, the skills, the abilities to do so. And I would encourage people who might be kind of sitting on the fence, call me. You know, 664-7101 will get you to me. And talk to me, because I really think that we have a lot of people in our community that could help us but don't know they really have the skill to do that.
Right. And just to, let's talk real quickly about contracts. Like, our, this contract was in a contract that we worked on this last year, correct? It's an improved contract than what they might have seen five years ago?
Ed techs really advocated for themselves, and they got a much higher pay rate. So, ed tech ones are now starting at, someone could correct me if I'm wrong, 1708 or 06 per hour?
Mm-hmm.
Something like that. And that's an ed tech one. So, that means if you have your high school diploma, then come see us. That's what's going to be your starting pay. And you could be starting off on a career that keeps you in our school systems for years. April, I think you started as an ed tech, right?
I did, actually, yeah.
Principal, this is one of the things we talk about in interviews. April started as an ed tech. Lisa, I think you were a teacher first. Yep, so we've got teachers, ed techs. I'm a social worker. So, we've all come to our position in schools in very different ways. So, it doesn't matter what your experience is. What matters is your commitment and your dedication to the children, really.
Right. So, I worked in our school system. I came in as a long-term sub as an ed tech, and it was one of the happiest jobs I ever had in my life.
It can be extremely rewarding.
Really is.
And it only takes that one smile from a kid every now and then.
It made me fall in love with our district and maybe want to preserve and cherish all the wonderful things there are.
Yep.
I just, I can't say enough. There's a million good jobs in our schools, and what a great way to be part of our community and to be, you know, people want to know what happens behind doors. Come on in.
Come see.
We are inviting you.
Come help us.
We are going to pay you to come see.
Well, and I think, as Carol Ann mentioned, it's a really great opportunity for parents in our district to be able to, one, be in the school, two, share a schedule with their kids, and three, make some extra money during the school year that can help contribute to family. Sometimes, sometimes you maybe have been a stay-at-home parent for a while because you had littles at home, and now they're in school, and you're looking to kind of dip your toe back into the working world, and it's a really great opportunity to do it. It really, really is. And there's also the opportunity, there's other opportunities for ed techs. They can ride vans with kids who need that. They can, they, sometimes if you're an ed tech three, you can actually tutor. You can do extended school year services. And Mr. Wood mentioned earlier, as did Ms. Clifford, that we had our extended school year services, and we were fully staffed. So, that's something that I really want to stress, is our ed techs that we have, and they referenced this earlier, have been with us for a very long time, many of them, and they stay with us, and they come back year after year. And as rewarding as the job is, it is also difficult. And I think that says something about the people that are in that school community, to keep the people, those central people here with us, and committing to their time in the summer, which they don't have to do. And this year, we actually expanded by one hour every single day and made that even longer. And we still had, I cannot stress enough, a fully staffed program, which I am incredibly proud of. And Lisa did a great job helping recruit, and the staff was amazing, so.
It's because we've got great people.
One other quick question. So, I was talking to somebody about ed tech positions, and they wanted to know, how many hours do you have to work to get health benefits? Do we know that?
The ed techs, they get health, yeah.
So, they get health from the getting?
They get single subscriber health, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, and that's a huge benefit. So, if you don't have health insurance for yourself, or if you're on your spouse's insurance or your partner's insurance, you can take yourself off that insurance, and you're going to get that benefit through the school. There's wonderful things you can find. I'm going to say, all right, I bought into that dental plan. It cost me $100 for my kid's wisdom teeth to come out. You cannot beat that.
Right. Right. That was what I, one of the things I wanted to say, is that my husband works in healthcare, and for quite a while, the health benefits at the school district level were better than what we were receiving, despite my husband working.
We have cat lab insurance. We really do, and that's a great selling point for the position. Sometimes you might make a few cents more at another district, but if you look at our health insurance package, oftentimes that really evens out, and it makes it worthwhile.
Right.
Thanks, Carol.
Thank you. I'm so glad you were here.
Thanks for coming up.
So, please apply.
Yeah. All right.
Okay. Let's go to first read of our policy, number two.
So, we met as a policy committee with Rebecca Wright to discuss hats at the high school level. That was something that was not changed or amended in the dress code when we amended it in October. We had still said that hats were not to be worn by students. Ms. Wright had spoken to Mr. Clifford, and there'd been conversations amongst leadership at the school, just stating that hats really did not interfere with the ability to see students' faces. So, this amendment, this first read of this amendment is to allow students at the high school level, so that it would include HCTC and at EHS, to be able to wear hats. It would still exclude hoodies and sunglasses, anything that might obstruct people from being able to see the face of the student, but it would allow for that, for students to wear that. And I do think it's important to mention that in part of that discussion, we talked about that some sending schools, some schools who send students to HCTC or to Ellsworth for British Academy, they allow hats in their schools, so it's kind of confusing when they come to our schools in Ellsworth and they can't wear those hats. So, it's just kind of an opportunity to allow for some additional expression, as long as that expression is following the other parts of the dress code, and also offer the opportunity to make things a little bit easier. It is written in there that teachers do reserve the right to ask students to remove their hats during class for any reason, whether it be because it's disruptive, because it's distracting, or just simply because they can't see the person, you know, for whatever reason, they would be allowed to ask a student to remove their hat.
Right. And this is a wonderful addition, I think. But, and did you want to come up and talk about this at all? I mean, well... This was, this, I love...
You're not going to believe it's me bringing it.
Oh, I...
I think you did, guys.
I think you did. You did great, and I think this really lends to how important we feel personal freedoms are and freedom of expression. And I've always felt like Ellsworth strives so hard to be equal, boys and girls, in our dress code, and this makes me proud.
Well, I think this goes very well hand-in-hand with the changes that we made in October. So, I'm really glad that Ms. Wright came to us and said, "Hey, we may have missed this part of a change," so.
Right. Very exciting. Okay.
Are they, are we going to allow Yankee hats?
No.
Since my great uncle played for them, I'm going to say yes.
Okay, because I can't get on board if that's the case.
Paul will not approve that.
You're going to make him cringe.
All right. Do we want to make a motion?
I move that we approve first read of the amended policy, JICA, dress code as recommended by the policy committee.
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Excellent. Motion carries. Wonderful.
And all of the rest are in the elementary setting, K through four. That's where we really have the most need.
But you need, you need, you need ed tech ones through threes or are you looking for most?
We're happy to give professional development to young people and obviously if people are afraid that maybe they don't have the experience.
Do you want to come up here and say?
I was gonna say.
Can we, I would really like people at home to hear you.
The public, that way the public hears.
So I, I think some people, and these are some of the inquiries that I've actually gotten, is what does it take to be an ed tech? And I know April mentioned earlier that she's happy to answer those questions, as am I, as is Lisa back when she's the assistant director of special education. Any of the principals can too, but I think some people think that you have to have all this education to start with. And you really don't. We can help you grow. If you come to us and you have a high school education and maybe it's 10 years out and you say, "I, I'm gonna make a change in my life," it's a really great opportunity to not only be on the same schedule as your children, but also as a community member to get in there and see all the really great things that we're doing. I mean, I think this is gonna be a fantastic year. We have a lot of great ideas and we sincerely are happy to train. And I think that we have the staff, the skills, the abilities to do so. And I would encourage people who might be kind of sitting on the fence, call me. You know, six six four seven one zero one will get you to me and, and, and talk to me because I really think that we have a lot of people in our community that could help us but don't know they really have the skill to do that.
Right. And just to, let's talk real quickly about contracts. Like our, this contract was in a contract that we worked on this last year, correct? It's an improved contract than what they might have seen five years ago?
Ed techs really advocated for themselves and they got a much higher pay rate. So ed tech ones are now starting at, someone could correct me if I'm wrong, seventeen oh eight or oh six per hour? Something like that. And that's an ed tech one. So that means if you have your high school diploma, then come see us. That's what gonna be your starting pay. And you could be starting off on a career that, that keeps you in our school systems for years. April, I think you started as an ed tech, right?
I did, actually, yeah.
Principal, this is one of the things we talk about in interviews. April started as an ed tech. Lisa, I think you were a teacher first. Yep, so we've got teachers, ed techs. I'm a social worker. So we've all come to our position in schools in very different ways. So it doesn't matter what your experience is. What matters is your commitment and your dedication to the children, really.
Right. So I worked in our school system. I came in as a long-term sub as an ed tech. And it was one of the happiest jobs I ever had in my life.
It can be extremely rewarding.
It really is.
It only takes that one smile from a kid every now and then.
It made me fall in love with our district and maybe want to preserve and cherish all the wonderful things there are.
Yep.
I, I just, I can't say enough. There's a million good jobs in our schools. And what a great way to be part of our community and to be, you know, people want to know what happens in our behind doors. Come, come on in. We are inviting you.
Come help us.
We are gonna pay you to come see.
Well, and I think as, as Carol Anne mentioned, it's a really great opportunity for, for parents in our district to be able to, one, be in the school, two, share a schedule with their kids, and three, make some extra money during the school year that can help contribute to family. Sometimes, sometimes you maybe are, have been a stay-at-home parent for a while because you had littles at home and now they're in school and you're looking to kind of dip your toe back into the working world. And it's a really great opportunity to do it.
It really, really is. And there's also the opportunity, there's other opportunities for ed techs. They can ride vans with kids who need that. They can, they, sometimes if you're an ed tech three, you can actually tutor. You can do extended school year services. And Mr. Wood mentioned earlier, as, as did Ms. Clifford, that we had our extended school year services. And we were fully staffed. So that's something that I really want to stress is our ed techs that we have, and they referenced this earlier, have been with us for a very long time, many of them. And they stay with us and they come back year after year. And, and as rewarding as the job is, it is also difficult. And I think that says something about the people that are in that school community, to keep the people, those central people here with us and, and committing to their time in the summer, which they don't have to do. And this year, we actually expanded by one hour every single day and made that even longer. And we still had, I cannot stress enough, a fully staffed program, which I am incredibly proud of. And Lisa did a great job helping recruit and the staff was amazing. So.
Because we've got great people. One other quick question. So I was talking to somebody about ed tech positions and they wanted to know, how many hours do you have to work to get health benefits? Do we know that?
The ed techs, they get, they get health, yeah.
So they get health from the getting?
They get single subscriber health, yeah. Yeah. I mean, and that's a huge benefit. So if you don't have health insurance for yourself, or if you're on your spouse's insurance or your partner's insurance, you can take yourself off that insurance and you're gonna get that benefit through the school. There's wonderful things you can find. I'm gonna say, all right, I bought into that dental plan. Cost me a hundred bucks for my kid's wisdom teeth to come out. You cannot beat that.
Right, right. That was what I, one of the things I wanted to say is that my husband works in healthcare and for quite a while, the health benefits at the school district level were better than what we were receiving.
We have health insurance. We really do. And that's a great selling point for the position. Sometimes you might make a few cents more at another district, but if you look at our health insurance package, oftentimes that really evens out and it makes it worthwhile.
Right.
Thanks, Carol.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming up.
So please apply.
Yeah, alright.
Okay, let's go to first read of our policy, number two.
So, so we met as a policy committee with Rebecca Wright to discuss hats at the high school level. That was something that was not changed or amended in the dress code when we amended it in October. We had still said that hats were not, not to be worn by students. Ms. Wright had spoken to Mr. Clifford and there'd been conversations amongst leadership at the school just stating that hats really did not interfere with the ability to see students' faces. So this amendment, this first read of this amendment is to allow students at the high school level, so that it would include HCTC and at EHS to be able to wear hats. It would still exclude hoodies and sunglasses, anything that might obstruct people from being able to see the face of the student. But it would allow for that, for students to wear that. And I do think it's important to mention that in part of that discussion, we talked about that some sending schools, some schools who send students to HCTC or to Ellsworth for British Academy, they allow hats in their schools. So it's kind of confusing when they come to our schools in Ellsworth and they can't wear those hats. So it's just kind of an opportunity to allow for some additional expression as long as that expression is following the other parts of the dress code. And also offer the opportunity to make things a little bit easier. It is written in there that teachers do reserve the right to ask students to remove their hats during class for any reason, whether it be because it's disruptive, because it's distracting, or just simply because they can't see the person. You know, for whatever reason, they, they would be allowed to ask a student to remove their hat.
Right. And this is a wonderful addition, I think. But, and, and, and did you want to come up and talk about this at all? I mean. This, this was, this, I love.
You're not gonna believe it's me bringing it.
Oh, I, I.
I think you did, yeah.
I think you did, you did great. And I, I think this really taught, you know, lends to how important we feel personal freedoms are and freedom of expression. And that I, I've always felt like Ellsworth strives so hard to be equal boys and girls in our dress code. And this, this makes me proud.
Well, and I think this goes very well hand in hand with the changes that we made in October. So I'm really glad that Ms. Wright came, came to us and said, "Hey, we may have missed this, this part of a change." So.
Right, very exciting. Okay.
Are they, are we gonna allow Yankee hats?
No.
Since my great uncle played for them, I'm gonna say yes.
Okay, because I can't get on board if that's the case.
Paul, Paul will not approve that.
You're gonna make him cringe.
All right, do we want to make a motion?
I move that we approve first read of the amended policy, JICA dress code, as recommended by the policy committee.
I will second. Any discussion?
All those in favor? Excellent. Motion carries. Wonderful. Okay, that's number three. Discussion and consolidation of equipment purchase bids from facilities committee.
All right. So I was very thankful the facilities committee came together quickly to approve three things. So first, to give history, we budgeted for fire alarm upgrades at Ellsworth High School. They're identified as a safety issue that we needed to have done. These were budgeted at a hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-six cents. Because of the timing of the vote for the budget and the delay, we had to get an updated quote. And that has now gone up to a hundred and thirty-five thousand, a hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-three cents. This has to be done. And we are using, the reason why there's not three quotes like there is when something's over five thousand dollars is because Norris is who does all of our work on this anyway. So they do our service to these things and do the upgrades. So the initial one is for Norris Fire to do our fire alarm upgrade. This was budgeted at the hundred and thirty thousand dollar amount under capital in the Ellsworth local budget. And we will find the money to offset the additional funding for that.
Excellent.
Do you want to do each one?
Why don't we do each one and then we can go ahead and, and vote on each one?
Okay. So next is our bleachers. As you know, we did that in two stages. We did last year and they look beautiful at the high school gym. And so we had also, again, budgeted for the remainder of the bleachers to be done. Again, those are also a safety issue and need to be removed. We had budgeted eighty-nine thousand dollars. Again, we had to get another quote because of the delay. And that has come in at ninety-three thousand dollars. And this would do and cover the furnishing, the delivering, the installation of the bleachers. So we'd like to get that scheduled as soon as possible.
Yep.
And again, this is the same company that did the first section of bleachers. This is just kind of phase two. And then finally, Frank and Josh had budgeted for our floor scrubber replacement to use at our schools. They did receive three different quotes and recommended that we take the Cleanorama Advance model at ninety-one hundred dollars for the stand-on floor scrubber. It is the lowest bid, but it's also, they have experience with the advanced machines and find them to be much more durable than some other brands that they've had. So that was their recommendation as well.
Excellent.
So I will make a motion to approve the bid for Norris Fire and fire alarm. The bid from Norris Fire for fire alarm upgrade as presented and recommended by the facilities committee.
I'll second that motion. Discussion? All those in favor? Excellent. Motion carries. I'll recommend a motion to approve the bid from A Plus Athletics Products for a set of bleachers as presented and recommended by the facilities committee.
I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I approve, I move to approve the bid from Cleanorama for a floor scrubber as presented and recommended by the facilities committee.
I will second. Any discussion? All in favor? Excellent. I just want to quickly talk to everybody at home about these, why, why these cost more money? These cost more money because we were set, we, we got bids, we were set to go when we could not vote on our budget when we originally wanted to. We had to push the vote back because it wasn't approved through city council. So we then had to, as you know, have a, an entirely separate.
Referendum.
Referendum to vote on that. In that time period, in the time it took, the extra time it took, the price of everything went up. And to really go back a little bit, we, we could have done this a year ago, two years, some of them two years ago, every time we're told to cut our budget. It is capital improvement things that go first, capital improvements and maintenance. And every time we cut our budget, not only do these things cost, we don't, we don't save our taxpayers a dime. We cost our taxpayers between a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty percent of the original price that we were quoted. So we do need to be conscious of that. When we are hashing out budgets, nothing gets cheaper over time. And in just a little bit of time, we had to go up this much. And we need to be very careful next year, what decisions we make as a community. Because, I mean, I, this delay between the extra referendum and this, we're, you know, this was at least twenty-five thousand to our, our city that we did not have, that, that's coming directly from the Ellsworth taxpayer. So it, it's worth mentioning. Okay, number four, discussion of return to school plan.
So we decided to put this on the agenda to just kind of ease public concerns that we're hearing. You know, we've obviously done return to schools under COVID for the last couple of years and wanted to assure the public and staff and community members that we are moving from the pandemic phase to the endemic phase. I feel like we did a really good job following the state protocols and the SOPs that the state put out as COVID hit. I feel like we made decisions based on that. And now we're in a stage where people have been vaccinated that have chosen to, people have boosted that have chosen to. So what we're looking to do is be open again, have schools return to normal as much as can. But if you are someone who is still nervous about COVID, you have the right to protect yourself. And if that means that students and our staff want to mask to start the school year, they will still be welcome. But we are not going to require that at all. We are not going to do contact tracing. We're not gonna participate in those things anymore. We're gonna continue to follow state and federal recommendations as needed. And right now, we're waiting for them to come out with those. So we're not gonna present a formal plan tonight. But I did want to start the conversation so that people were assured. In meeting with the nurses, we talked about what that would look like. And really, we're gonna move into take care of yourself, make your decisions to keep yourself safe, and that will be respected. But we are going to open schools as normal. The one exception, of course, will be if you're COVID positive. We will follow those rules. But other than that, we want people in person back to school. We won't have students zooming. Students will be back in our buildings and staff as well. So we're actually super excited about that. And, you know, we will continue to support families who have questions about COVID or who want to test. Our school nurses have tests. They can help families so that if they want to test, they can. And so we'll continue to provide resources and support for families through the schools. But that's where we're headed. Once we get the state and federal recommendations, we will revisit this, I'm guessing at our August twenty-third workshop or at a special board meeting. You did vote previous years to follow state SOPs. And so one of the questions that we have is, do we, there is no more SOP right now. So do we take a vote at the end of August to go back to normal and not follow the SOPs? But we're gonna wait and get those DOE and federal recommendations and put that together for you for the end of August. But that's where, that's what we're looking at right now.
And I think it's important to mention for parents, like obviously, this, we go back to school as close to normal as we can. That doesn't mean that it just, COVID just falls away and goes away. It remains a moving target that we keep an eye on and that we continue to, will continue to evolve as needed. It's not like, you know, last year when we started school, those decisions weren't set in stone for the entire year. Just like starting in a regular, normal situation is not set in stone if things need to be shifted. But I think, I mean, we finished the school year basically this way last year. And I think, man, how exciting for kids to see each other's faces on the first day for the first time in years.
Well, I think finding the balance for keeping this in mind, that it's going on, but that we do need to move to the endemic phase. And how can we do that so people still feel safe? But we also have to take in to account the social, emotional learning of kids as well. And so this is kind of where the school nurses and I met and we talked at leadership about it. And we're excited to move into that phase.
Awesome. Very excited for this work that you've done. Thank you so much.
Thank you guys for that update. I'm sure parents are glad to hear, glad to hear that it's being talked about and being looked at. So, awesome.
All right, number five, discussion and consideration for approval for a grant application for school health center collaboration between Ellsworth School Department and Bucksport Regional Health Care Center.
So I would like to introduce Rebecca Wright, assistant principal at Ellsworth High School. And also here, in case there are questions, is Michelle Osborne, our Ellsworth High School school nurse who is here this evening, and we're super appreciative of that.
Thank you.
We're gonna have Rebecca give an overview of this before you take your vote.
Okay. Thank you, Rebecca. You still got to come up to the podium.
I know. That's why I didn't come earlier. So I believe you would have gotten my little, little, they made fun of me. They said it was too long, but it was a one-page history of how we got here and some other pieces, I believe you all received. I kind of can't believe I'm standing here because this discussion started four or five years ago in the dropout prevention committee, which I am privileged to head up and we meet monthly usually. And we talked about, wouldn't it be great if we could have a health-based, student health clinic in our schools? They have them in Brewer and Hamden and Bucksport has a component. And we were very excited about it. One of the things that really affects student success is their attendance in school. And clearly, health is affected. Many times, they, they go home, many times they come to school sick, actually, and they get dismissed. They don't have healthcare access. We found out in getting data for this that thirty-five to forty percent of our students actually come from the rural outlying schools that have very little options for healthcare other than the school nurse. So we had been talking about it. We talked about researching it. We had gone and looked at a couple places that have the health clinics in their schools. And it was kind of becoming a very big thing. And do we need to do like a facility study, a search, community surveys? And, and we got a little overwhelmed with it. And then COVID hit. So we didn't have to worry about it for a while. We weren't gonna be doing anything. And then as we came out of COVID this year, we decided mental health needed to be our focus and where we put our emphasis and our time, which we did. And then low and behold, around April, May, the MPA, actually Main Principals Association, put out information about grant money that the DOE had that they wanted to award to, I believe it's sixteen awards they're going to do to create health clinics in schools. So we started looking. Michelle, thankfully, is on our group, our committee. And she did a lot of the research and started getting a lot more information really quickly that we needed. And it just started falling into place. She found us a Bucksport Regional Health Center, was very interested in partnering, partnering with us. And they already have a system over in Bucksport that they do. So they're very familiar with the process, familiar with all the challenges. And they are actually, their building is sort of right near the high school there. So the kids go back and forth. Ours will be housed in the school. So then it just started rolling faster and faster. And we attended several, there was an online workshop put on by the DOE and all the big stakeholders were there. Then we had another meeting, a smaller meeting with actually Bucksport Regional Health Center representatives, DOE representatives, the people accepting the grants. And it just seemed to be the time to apply for it. The grant monies could be as much as sixty-five thousand and it's a two-year grant. The Bucksport Regional Health Center actually submits the grant. We've been providing information, data for them, but they actually submit the grant. What we provide is the facility. They do all the billing, they do all the hiring, all of that. We've been having Frank Evansen, our maintenance director, has been meeting with their person to look at our facility in this space and what needs to happen and getting estimates for renovation, et cetera. So the grant itself is due on August eighteenth. Oh, please, let me add also that Katrina Kane gave me permission. I called her. I'm like, can, can we go ahead? Can we like at least? And she said, "You go right ahead." So we, we did have permission to be exploring this, be preparing to apply for the grant. But at the point that we start talking about, okay, we're actually going to go into a partnership with an outside agency and they're gonna be working in the school, definitely we knew we needed to come talk to you about that and bring that to you. So that is sort of it in a nutshell. Do you want to add anything about that?
No, you did great.
Okay, great.
And Bucksport Regional Health was who we, who we teamed up with for the in-school COVID vaccines as well, weren't they?
Yes, yes. Wonderful. This is really exciting.
They're very excited. They have, you were provided with what they called a white page, which kind of outlines what they provide, et cetera. And what the breakdown in the grant is. And they gave that to their board, I don't know if it's a board of directors, and it was unanimously approved right away. So they're now waiting on us. I got an email today from Carol Carew. And also, we provided from the National Association of School Nurses, kind of the outlook of what's the difference between a school nurse? It takes nothing away from the school nurse. She'll be just as busy as ever, no doubt. But, but it, it complements that and supplements that. And then we also provided a sample, just a sample memorandum of understanding, which would be developed once we get the grant, once we get the partnership going.
And how long would it, would we expect before we would hear back about the grant?
Well, it's due August seventeenth. We assume it's within the month. The whole timeline was supposed to begin in June and for whatever reason, got pushed back, you know. So it's, so it's a little bit behind right now. But what Carol said today was, they would be looking to be up and running by November first.
Wow, awesome.
In the building.
Amazing.
And you have a space?
We do have a space. We're looking at renovating it. They're gonna meet again. We're trying to squeeze it in. Yes. It will be right, it will be part of Michelle's space and taking over the small file cabinet room. That's right next door there and kind of expanding. And very honestly, that would be, for the time being, we would look to move it into a bigger space in the building. Down the road, should we be able to get more space?
Okay.
Which we need desperately at the high school.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
This is magnificent work, really.
Yes.
Yeah.
Really propelling us into the future.
A lot of people, so.
Awesome. Amazing. I can't, I'm, I'm really excited about this personally. Do we have a motion?
So I will make a motion to approve the submission of the grant application for, for school, application for a school health center collaboration between Ellsworth School Department and Bucksport Regional Health Center as presented.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Wonderful. Outstanding work.
I need that in writing tomorrow. So I want to thank them for their work on this. So Hope High at HCTC sits on the dropout prevention committee. And they've been talking about these kinds of things for many years. So this is a great step in the right direction. So thank you to you guys for your work on this.
And thanks, thanks Bucksport Regional Health again. Thank you. We are very lucky, very lucky. All right. Number six, discussion and consideration for approval of grant applications for Hancock Technical Center.
So we keep having additional funding, which I will certainly accept. So there are three new current technical center monies that we can apply for. First is the Perkins Reserve Fund. So there was Perkins carryover that the federal gave the state. And each CTE school can apply for up to forty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars each, should they choose. This is a very targeted. This is a very targeted application that wants us to specifically examine breaking down barriers for kids being able to attend CTE due to scheduling conflicts at their high school, whether it's a scheduling conflict or that it is that a student is behind. And also looking at funding to infuse math and literacy into programs to help students earn skills in those areas. So that's the first pot of money. The second is the CTE State One-Time Supply. So the CTE State Board of Education Subcommittee that I sit on, we talked for several meetings about how to expend a one-time funding source. And one of the things that directors statewide talked about is the rising cost of supplies that CTE schools have, culinary arts, the takeout boxes, tools, everything has astronomically gone up. And these increases weren't necessarily accounted for as early as most CTE schools did budgets. So each school was allotted a sum of money, ours is $48,629. That has to be specifically applied for and spent on rising costs for supplies for CTE programs. And then finally, this is, we've done this for several years now. The governor allot a pot of money for program update funds, which is specifically for equipment upgrades and new assessments that we want, may want to give students for certifications. And for this coming year, we've been allotted $67,389 that I need to apply for. So the total between the three grants is $157,000. And, well, $157,700 between the three. So asking your permission tonight to go ahead and apply for these three grants.
Absolutely wonderful, by the way.
Money, money.
That's, that's, once again, that's $157,700. The taxpayers of Ellsworth are not expected to come up with.
Amy, so we've got the HCTC Perkins Reserve, the HCTC Program Supply Update, and what's the name of the other one?
CTE State Program Update.
Okay.
Go ahead, Paul.
Okay, I move, I move that we approve the submission of grant applications for HCTC Perkins Reserve, HCTC Program Supply Update, and CTE State Program Update as presented by the superintendent.
I second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor? Once again, fantastic job.
Yes, thank you very much.
Wow. All right, number seven, discussion and consideration of the MSBA resolutions. We want to go over this very quickly.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering though, if we, we don't have to take action on this this evening because the, then for the, just for everyone who doesn't know, the MSMA Fall Conference takes place at the end of October. And those, some of us will be attending that, that conference, some of us on the board and hopefully our superintendent as well. And one of us is a delegate to the assembly, will be voting on this, these resolutions after our board takes action on it. So we have actually the September meeting and even the October meeting to do, to take these actions. And since the whole board isn't here this evening.
Yep.
Some of these motions are fairly unremarkable, and I don't know if any of them are really controversial, but some of them are pretty just, you know, you'd say, oh yeah, sure, we should do that. But I, I'd be more comfortable if we could take this action with the full board here and, and maybe have a little bit more time to discuss them. We're getting close to the eight o'clock mark this evening.
So I think we would make a motion to table item seven to. So I will make a motion that we table item seven, discussion and consideration of MSMA resolutions to the September agenda.
I second that motion. Discussion?
And for discussion, I would just add, you know, we, we could also talk about some of these in a workshop if we have time during a workshop.
Yes.
I like that.
Awesome.
Wonderful, all in favor? Motion table. Wonderful, all right, let's move on to K, calendar and announcements.
Don't want me to do it? Okay, school board workshop will be Tuesday, August 23rd, at City Hall Council Chambers at 6:00 PM. And the school board meeting will be Tu, Thursday.
Nope.
Hold on.
That's incorrect.
That should be Tuesday.
All right, school board meeting will be Tuesday, and I'm gonna look up the.
I got you.
The 11th, September 11th.
Nope.
Nope.
September 11th is a Sunday.
It's Tuesday, September 13th.
Sorry, right.
Okay, okay.
The day was wrong.
Yeah, it was just the day.
Okay, so the school board meeting will be Tuesday, September 13th at 6:00 PM, City Hall Chambers again. And having no further business, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
I second that motion. All those in favor? Adjourn. Thank you.